Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners regular meeting today, Tuesday, June 13th, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we move forward, are there any adjustments to today's agenda? Any adjustments to today's agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
All right. Good. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. So, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. At this point, we have our public comment period, which is an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board and address any matters of concern to the county. So, are there any members of the public that wish to speak today in our audience? Are there any remarks that have been sent in by email to commissioners or to our administrators?
Yes. I have a letter from John Barton from McBag Point out in Hooflin, and then I have some questions from Arvis Thompson.
Oh, and she, just so you know, Commissioner, she just requested that we give that letter to you. She didn't ask for it to be read.
Okay. She did, when I spoke to her on the phone, she asked if I would bring up some of these points.
Okay.
That's probably during commissioner comments, not so much public comments.
Okay. But I will read John Barton's letter here. "Deb, I am concerned about the proposed CIP scope for new building to accommodate county staff. I agree with LEC needs, but not moving the court to the LEC. The update on capital improvement plan for county buildings posted on county website gives the county's rationale for the CIP plans. The posting cites most of the need is generated by public health and human services staff increase over the past 10 years. The increases were driven by the loss of the previous provider and increase in demand as the result of the CIP program changes and the pandemic. The plan makes no attempt to justify a real need, just a rationalization based on the loss of past staff and program changes. Alternatives are not discussed. As for the space needs, assuming staff levels asserted, how about using renting, purchasing options, space used by previous providers? How about the lower level at the hospital or the clinic? How about temporary space until the pandemic surge is resolved? How about building in the business park? Keep the court in the courthouse? $21.8 to $24.8 million is a lot of money for a county of our size. The posting says some of the services may be covered by grants, the state, or health plans, but the building costs and who pays for the grants and the state aid. We clearly need to repair and maintain what we have. We may need more, but that need needs to be rational and not driven by who knows. Thanks for listening, John Barton."
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
And just to clarify, did he ask in the email for that to be read during public comment?
Yes.
Oh.
On the phone, I asked him if I, I called him and we discussed it, and I said, could I read this during public comment? And he said, yes.
Okay.
Should it be in writing next time?
Well, the reason I ask is this is something that comes up at the hospital board meeting often, is anytime board members get comments, then they feel like that's the time to share it, is during public comment, but that's really during commissioner concerns and discussions. So, this is an opportunity for people to come before the board and speak. They can also submit via email.
Right.
But it's more of a, otherwise, we could sit all day during public commenting.
Right. So, this was, no, I asked him, I said, John, would you, would you be all right with this being shared during public comment period? And he said, absolutely. So, and I, he said, use my name, everything. I want this out there.
Okay.
Do you need a copy of this?
We do need it.
Do you need a copy of this?
Yes, we do.
Who needs, oh, Jana will need it.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Are there any public comments from other commissioners that need to be shared? Or Administrator Yorki?
I don't have any, Madam Chair.
All right. We'll close our public comment period and move on to our consent agenda. Is there an item any commissioner would like to pull from our consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storey. We have a motion and support for our consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public Health and Human Services, and I see that Allison is here. Good morning.
Good morning.
And Andrea Orest as well.
Good morning.
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you. It's good to be here this morning. I'm here to present a request to allocate a portion of Cook County's opioid litigation funds towards naloxone, Narcan, supplies, and training. This is an unmet need that we have identified within our local partnership, working under the Federal Health Resource Service Administration, or HERSA, R-CORP grant. And again, that R-CORP is Rural Communities Opioid Response Program. That's a three-year grant partnership with the University of Minnesota, Grand Portage, Sawtooth Mountain Clinic, and Cook County. The primary function of that grant is supporting staff across each of those entities to lead this work locally. We have a small budget for harm reduction supplies, including naloxone, Narcan, fentanyl test strips, and training to support community-based providers in offering that training. So, again, the proposal before you today is to allocate up to $18,000 of the approximately $48,000 received by Cook County to date. Our total anticipated allocation is $238,000, but that is coming in over the course of 18 years. As indicated in the request for action, we have distributed approximately 150 doses to date. We are still fairly early on in our work to expand access to these supplies, so expect that to ramp up as our outreach efforts continue. The first training that was offered locally was in January. So, again, we're in the first six months of really ramping up our efforts to increase access to these overdose prevention supplies locally. So, in addition to supplies that would be distributed across our agency here in Public Health and Human Services, Grand Portage Human Services, Grand Portage Health Services, Sawtooth Mountain Clinic, we are also partnering with Cook County Higher Ed to offer the naloxone training alongside their regular CPR first aid training that they offer to community members and businesses. I regret not including this in the materials that were included in your board agenda, but will mention that Johns Hopkins University of Public Health has developed a primer for local governments on spending opioid litigation funds, and broadening access to naloxone is the first of nine core strategies published by Johns Hopkins for local governments. And I'll just share a brief quote from that primer. "Over 100,000 people died as a result of the overdose epidemic from September 2020 to September 2021. Approximately 75,000 of those deaths involved opioids, most of which were due to synthetic opioids such as fentanyl. Spending the litigation money on strategies shown to save lives from prescription opioid misuse and illicit opioid use is essential." So, happy to take any questions about the proposal in front of you today. I also have Andrea Orest, Cook County's Prevention Coordinator, under that R-CORP grant, to address more questions about our local efforts.
Are there any questions commissioners have? I would just like to thank you for the training you've provided and the supplies you've provided to our community. It's an important strategy and an important way to help our community, and I really appreciate all you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to thank you for the coordination and the outreach you're doing with our community partners. That's really key as we address this. As long as we're all working together, we're going to be able to do the most work. So, thank you for that.
Commissioner Mills, excuse me, Administrator Yorki.
That's all right. That's all right. Yeah, I just wanted to also acknowledge the participation of our partners in this work. Really glad that we have the consortium to use as a sounding board to make decisions about how to best use these funds, and I feel like this is a no-brainer. So, thanks.
Absolutely. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Engineer Haas from the Highway Department.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. So, we kind of had a bit of good news from the legislature. I'm sure some folks are aware of a variety of different bonding bills that have become available. One of those in particular has been a bridge bonding bill. That's where we get involved. And it kind of hammers the point home for us about having projects done, ready, signed, and ready to go. This project in particular, the Sawbill Creek culvert replacement there, pretty much at the end of the Sawbill Trail, was originally intended to be 100% levy funded because a bonding bill didn't pass last year when we were ready to go out for bid. Thankfully, we had saved up enough locally where regardless of what would happen, we were able to do the project. And so, what's nice is since we don't have a shovel in the ground yet, that starting in August, is they were able to put this one through, and so instead of, I think it's about $620,000 that would have to come out of the levy, it's $76,000 that comes out of the levy, and we are able to save the remainder. So, what we applied for and received was bridge bonds for just over $543,000. Not just this project. This one is what we're talking about today. Two other ones, though, are affected by this. Alfred Creek on County Road 28, Alfred Creek Road, and then actually our Grand Portage project up in Grand Portage on Mile Creek Road. Both of those are going to receive bonds as well. Just because they're in '24, I haven't gotten those letters yet, but overall, because of the bonding package the legislature passed and that we're ready to go, it's a little over $2 million that we'll be bringing in, which is money that doesn't have to get spent from our tax base. So, anyways, does anybody have any questions?
Would anybody like to make a motion to accept over half a million dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support from anyone?
I will support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins jumped in. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your work. And here comes Tim Nelson, Land Services. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have, in front of you is kind of a standard replacement of a recycling bin trailer. We have those flatbed trailers with multiple bins on them that we have positioned throughout the county in different areas. Over the course of years, of course, they rust and degrade and such like that. So, this is something that had been plugged into the budget. On the downside, it's more expensive than we had anticipated as we see the costs increasing across the board. On the positive side, we, our revenues in the redemption of the materials that we submit or send off to the markets have stabilized and increased. So, our anticipated revenues are better, way better than they were plugged into the budget. And also, on the, speaking of the legislature, that had happened, we did get an increase in our base score funding going into next year. So, the funds are looking pretty good for this. We did have this budget that had $30,000. We do have a fund, and for those who may not know or don't recall, we have this old landfill fund that we had accumulated all the way up through the time that we had closed the landfill in 1999, 2000 timeframe, and we have kept that money aside to use for the replacement of recycling equipment and such. That had been draining down, so I got direction from the board to plug in funds to replenish or replace to keep that fund going for this purpose, and I had been. So, this is kind of a wash. We had plugged in $30,000 into the budget, which any excess would go to that fund, but would be ending up pulling about, well, it's $1,640 from that fund, I would anticipate, to balance that out, so there wouldn't be any further impact on the levy.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Commissioner Hawkins?
I'm just wondering, what is the life expectancy of these trailers?
They, well, and that's, that's one of the reasons why the cost increases, because we, we really insist on good rust proofing of these and the materials. We've gone through different variations of these trailers. We've tried plastic bins. We've tried the aluminum bins. They don't make either of those anymore. They're back to the full, full-blown steel bins and just rust-proof the crap out of them. And so, we get at least 10 years to, 10 to 15 years out of these.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions?
I've, I've heard some feedback in the community is wanting more trailers. Is that something that's an option, just more options, particularly some West End businesses? I mean, I don't know the ins and outs of the operations, but just wanted to ask if you've been hearing similar things or if there's any thoughts around that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, that's, it is always a good question, and we do hear this, and we try to maintain that balance because certainly additional trailers demands additional logistics for that. Right now, we, we kind of have, when we hit the busy times in the summer, we have one staff member who's pretty much going all, all day, all week, is kind of dedicated to the transfer of those trailers since they're located in all the different areas. So, that certainly is an option, but it will have and would have an impact on the logistics that we have. And right now, we're a bit on the short-staffed level of things as well. So, it would be difficult to do it right now, and in fact, these take six to eight weeks to manufacture, so this one isn't going to be until a couple of months from now anyway. So, that is certainly worth a discussion. But, and also, looking at the West End, we have to have further discussions with regards to the Tofti Station since we had the one holler that had been in conjunction with us on that Tofti Station sold out to North Shore Waste, and so we have to have discussions with North Shore Waste about the, that facility and what services will be provided, whether we would expand or deviate from those type of services. But yeah, and currently now, too, we had the trailers sitting at the base of the Ski Hill Road, which now they're displaced because of those, the trail project that's going on right now. KGM is working in there. And so, we have the cardboard trailer that's sitting at the base of the Caribou Trail, which is working out well enough. And then we also had to switch trucking contractors because David Smith had retired on us, and so we switched that. So, logistically, we've kind of planned out at this point, and we can, we can do it, but we would have to add resources to do it.
Yeah, and I get that. I was, I guess my, what I was getting at is, is the demand there? Is this something that we should be looking at more as far as, you know, are you seeing that demand or is that? I certainly wouldn't have good enough perspective. I think you might, and then those business owners on the West End are saying that, but...
It does ebb and flow. You know, we do get our shoulder seasons, and we are seeing actually less and less of shoulder seasons because, you know, businesses in the area keep thinking of ways to be able to keep tourism, you know, active and resources coming in. And so, it, we do see an increase, but it's, it's not, you know, we've kind of hit that place in our curve in terms of the, the number of increase of materials isn't going as much as it is. We're kind of reaching that top, and it's, it's kind of rounding out is where it is. And in effect, in this, next week, hopefully, we'll be talking about the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan that we had discussed with all the counties in the region, and one of the pushes for that is going to be waste reduction and source reduction. So, that's, can, if we get it out of the waste before it has to be recycled, that's, that's preferable to recycling. So, that's one level of initiative that could impact that. Could we use, it depends on the timeframe. That's why in the summertime, we hire, you know, temps to be able to supplement for staffing levels and such like that. So, we do see that increased demand in the summer for sure.
And I know, I know I've cried about this before, but there's also that, the requests coming in for just a trailer sitting at the recycle center to be able to drop stuff out 24/7. And I know we don't want to stretch our staff any further, and it can be very messy and sorting through all that is, when it's not supervised, can be, can be challenging.
And that is, Commissioner, that's a very important aspect of that. It's not just at the recycling center because we did run into a lot of prohibited dumping, and it does, does take a lot of staff time to clean all of that up and get it set. But we do run into that in the rural trailer areas as well. It gets as bad as having spent baby diapers, bags of them in those bins as well. And so, not only does it take staff time to clean those bins out, but it also detracts away from the value of those materials. We get source-separated materials, and the cleaner they are and the more consistent they are, the better of redemption value we do get.
Absolutely. Commissioner Storey.
And to Commissioner Mills' point, now that the West End recycle center is open three days a week, I'm there once a week, and I would say the recyclable trailers are good. Pull them in, pull them out. Where we lack is the cardboard. The cardboard trailer right now at the base of Caribou Trail is a few yards from my house. So, I go on my daily walks. I call Tim. I say, it's time to get, the cardboard's getting close to the front door. Not of my house, but of the trailer. And so, they come. I mean, it's great. We've worked out a deal that, you know, he honors that, so. But cardboard is the biggest lack of trailers, and I've always kept pushing for two at Tofti, but, you know, like you say, you only have so much equipment to work with, but maybe in the future.
Well, and Madam Chair and Commissioner Storey, that's, that is, just, just as kind of a heads up, we have one more trailer of the flatbeds with the multi-bins that I'm plugging in for next year. After that, we're going to pay attention to the semi-trailers, some of which are, you know, we have to continually work on just to keep DOTed so that they're, they're roadworthy. So, we do have to look at those. What we have typically done is just kind of run those until they cannot run anymore, and we pick them up used and such. So, we're going to have to have that discussion in terms of the replacement of those trailers. We have a number of those that we will be looking at replacing over the next several years.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the quote for the trailer.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storey. So, we have a motion, support, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. At this time, we have a legal matter. Attorney Hickon, I'll let you introduce it.
Thank you, Chair. So, we are going to be asking the commissioners to approve the sale of land, which is in the county's ownership through kind of a debt collection action. Has been in our ownership for a few years, and we've been trying to sell it for a few years. We, Mr. Furlong, Rich Furlong, is here from Smith Law because he's helped to prepare some of the real estate transaction documents. What I'm going to recommend to the commissioners, which requires a motion, would be to approve a closed session to talk to you about the proposed price of sale and any other details you, allow you an opportunity to ask questions about how we came to bring this before you. And Mr. Furlong would be here during the closed session in an attorney-client relationship, having prepared the purchase agreement. Does that, does that include the scope of your representation?
Yep. Exactly.
So, my recommendation would be for the board to pass a motion closing the meeting under Chapter 13 for negotiation of a sale of real property.
Thank you, Attorney.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under Chapter 13D. Point 05, Subdivision 3C, to discuss the sale of parcel ID 531022100.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Our session is closed, and we'll move to our TV.
Okay. All right.
Well, welcome back, everyone. We have returned from our closed session and are here with item 7B to discuss the sale of county-owned land.
Well, Madam Chair, I guess I'd like to make a motion to say that $34,800 is appropriate for the sale of this land, and that I'd like to give authority to the county administrator and county auditor to execute the sale of the property and to approve the sale of the property described in the draft purchase agreement pursuant to the purchase agreement.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Storey. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Attorney Hickon and Auditor Powers. Appreciate your work on this. All right, we'll move on to Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, first item is the lodging tax report. This is through March of 2023. This is usually on consent agenda. Just thought it would be interesting. In this case, you see for the three months, you see a decrease, which we haven't seen very much in recent years. It is just three months, but that's unusual in any case. But to put it in perspective, if you look way at the top, you see the year, full year, and you see 2021, we had a 27% increase. That was COVID. That was the governor's order. People stay outside and they came here. So, kind of unexpected. So, we had a huge increase that year. We had just a slight decrease last year and a little more this year, and I think it's just probably people's lives going back to normal a little bit, and maybe other things are opening up for them to do when they're not here quite as often. So, I wouldn't take it as a real, yet, as a real reduction, let's say, in people's tendency to come here. So, anyway.
Appreciate that historical perspective.
Yeah, it's just kind of unusual. Second item is just a request to set a public hearing to consider changes to fees. This was driven by an earlier meeting in May where there was a changing our, some of our land service processes and the boundary line adjustment process, and Tim Nelson. In that, I was calling because of the amount of work involved in border line adjustments, that there would be a fee for that. So, he's asking for this fee hearing in order to propose that. At the same time, we'll put this out to all the other departments in case someone else has a fee change to make, they could make it at the same time. And Tim is asking that that date be July 25th. So, if you could pick a time, say 9:00 AM on the 25th, to set a public hearing fee change.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on July 25th, 2023, at 9:00 AM to discuss changing of fees.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support for our public hearing for July 25th at 9:00 AM. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, asking for the board to approve by resolution to make UBS Financial Services as one of our investment advisors. They would be a depository is the actual term. But one more company that we can use to look at investments when we have money to invest. So, we talked with them, Kelly and I, at length. We're impressed. They gave us a list of counties. They serve several counties in Minnesota. Talked to all of them, and they were not just, yeah, they're a good alternative, but they were all very positive over this company, the types of advice. They had strategic advice. So, they're very impressed with them. They helped them during some of the slow times to do some nuanced work when the interest rates were very, very low. They all felt very good about them. So, we'd like to make them one of our advanced investment advisors. If you look at our policy, we're not technically required by the board to come here to use a new company for investment, but this company asks for a board approval by resolution. So, that's why, that's the resolution that you see in the packet. So, any questions on that?
Questions by any Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve by resolution to use UBS Financial Services as an investment advisor for County and authorize Brady and Kelly to sign the corporate resolution and client relationship between them.
One correction that I incorrectly put a V in there. It's just UBS Financial Services.
I amend my motion.
All right. So, we have an amended motion to approve by resolution, UBS Financial Services. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Administrator Yolanda.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, on May 15th, Minnesota Management Budget announced that it would be allocating for fiscal year 2024, or I should say, it would be issuing $880 million of capital bonds for fiscal year 2024, and would also be using $800 million of cash from the state budget surplus to make available state agencies and local governments for capital projects. The state typically does capital bonding every other year. So, and you may be aware, in the last legislative session just concluded, it also approved projects for bonding. So, it's a little bit unusual that this is happening two years in a row. Typically, this happens every other year. But it's a large pot of money that's available right now, $1.68 billion. And the timeline for getting a preliminary application into the state is June 16th, which is this Friday. So, this is basically to get your place in line to be considered for state assistance for capital projects. If we miss that deadline, my expectation is we'd have to wait another couple of years to be considered for state funding assistance for our CIP. So, that is a short timeline, and it's not ideal for us because I know there's still some outstanding questions about the CIP. And I also know that we are in the process of developing our financial management plan. So, but this is great news in terms of the financial management plan because it gives us an opportunity potentially to secure some state funding that would not then have to be put on the local levy. So, that's a big opportunity. So, I've come to realize that in this job, you have to be really comfortable with uncertainty because uncertainty is constant. If I had my brothers, the timing of this would be different, and we'd have more of an opportunity to do some planning and get ready for this. But it's come about rather suddenly. Again, we would have to put in a preliminary application by this Friday to get our place in line for state assistance for FY '24. And so, knowing that this is on the table, Brady and I had a conversation with Bruce Kimmel at Ellers to talk about an approach for securing some funds. One thought was, you know, we could just put the whole CIP, the deferred maintenance, up for funding. Bruce thought that it would be, that our chances of success would be greater if we chose something that was more discreet. In looking at the CIP, obviously, our key buildings are the most costly ones in terms of needed maintenance. So, the county courthouse over five years has deferred maintenance of about $3.87 million. Law enforcement center has deferred maintenance needs of just shy of $1.7 million. And so, that's without the discussion about adding any new space. So, we have obviously major, major capital needs there. In talking with Bruce, his suggestion was, you know, we really need to focus the application to increase our chances of getting funded. Option one in the draft CIP is the proposal to add space over at the law enforcement center, adding to the footprint of the existing building on the first floor to add the larger Sally Port, the evidence processing and storage, new workspaces for deputies, and also a permanent emergency operations center and office space for the emergency manager. And then also with that would be the addition of a second level to add space for courtroom and ancillary spaces, offices for the county attorney, for court administration, and for probation. And so, that's kind of a discrete piece of the CIP. Bruce thought that would be a good thing to put Bruce thought that would be a good thing to put forward. The price tag for that is $17.4 million. The state funding requires a 50% local match. So if that were our application, we would be asking for $8.7 million from the state and then would have to finance the remaining portion of that out of reserves and local bonding. And so that's kind of the general proposal on the table this morning. If we submit a preliminary application by this Friday, we have until October 13th to make edits to the application. So if we get additional information and want to make tweaks to the application, we could. We could not submit an application on Friday and then totally change the scope of it by October. So what we submit as part of the preliminary application would have to be substantially the same as what we put forward in October. So I was thinking about ways that we could build in some flexibility and other than making, I mean, for example, the board has not approved the CIP. If it does so, in the interim, we would include that information that the CIP has been approved by the board, along with when we adopt the financial management plan, that would be an edit that we could make. But we couldn't really change the scope of the project. And so thinking about, again, the best opportunity for us to secure funding, you know, in our conversations with Bruce, that was kind of where we landed. So I know you probably have a lot of questions about that. I appreciate that Commissioner White read a letter about the very issue of adding new space at the beginning of this meeting. My concern is this is a unique opportunity that won't come before us again for at least a couple of years. And if we do apply for state assistance for fiscal year '26, there's no guarantee that there would be as much on the table. I'm really eager to get as much state bonding for our CIP as we can because every dollar we get from the state is one less dollar we have to put on the levy. So I'm going to pause there. I know that's a lot. I'm sure there are a lot of questions and I probably don't have a lot of answers because I've shared pretty much everything I know right now. I guess I would invite Brady to add anything that I might have missed.
I don't think you missed anything.
Okay. So Administrator Yorki, a question I have is October 13th, we could make edits. What would be examples of some of the types of edits that can be done? You said we can't change the scope.
Right.
What would be an example of that?
I mean, if we just get new information about minor adjustments. I mean, if, you know, again, the proposal would be substantially what's described as option A in the draft CIP. And so we could make changes. For example, we could edit the application to say, yes, the board has approved the CIP right now. The draft text for our application just says the board is expected to approve the CIP in July. And I hedged a little bit. We were originally planning to ask for your approval of the CIP on June 25th, but I heard some feedback in the committee of the whole meeting in May that you might not be ready to give that approval by the 25th. So I pushed that back a little bit. And then also the adoption of the financial management plan, which, when we started the conversation about the FMP, we did not anticipate going for, we didn't know that this funding was going to be available. So that kind of changes things. And so we still need to put the FMP together, get that in front of you for consideration and approval. Those are the kinds of things that we could then add to the application, saying that we do have a plan, a fully formed plan for the other $8.7 million that would have to come from local sources.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Starlee. So my question is, right now, we're zeroing in on the courthouse and law enforcement.
Correct.
So that's going to be the dedicated place for the money before the October date. Can we say we're going to put it into the highway department? Can we change the request that way?
That's a good question. So what I was planning to do in this preliminary application is to propose the scope that includes the LEC and the courthouse and also include a paragraph that says, that acknowledges that we have other capital needs and that the county would be open to changing the scope of the proposal if MMB is interested to add other elements. I think one concern I have is that we have not done any costing for like a new highway administration building and maintenance facility. And so we don't have, I don't want to overstate the cost estimates that we have for the courthouse and the LEC, but they're a lot firmer than kind of the napkin sketch that we would have to use to include that as an element in this request. What I don't want to do is put things into the application that potentially could reduce our chances of success. I feel pretty confident in the numbers that we have for the LEC and the courthouse. Robbie did provide me very rough estimates of what he thought new buildings on the highway campus would cost, but they're really rough. I mean, they're not based on any kind of engineering estimates. So my suggestion would be that we keep the scope of the preliminary application to option one, i.e. the courthouse and the LEC. Include a paragraph in the application that says we certainly do have other capital needs, a lot of other deferred maintenance in our buildings that we would welcome state assistance on. And so that would open the door, I think, for MMB when it receives our application. There's going to be a process where they come back to us for additional information so that we get an opportunity for conversations about potentially changing the scope. I don't know how, how much, I mean, it really depends on how many entities submit applications for funding in this round. Because there was just a capital funding, bonding round in fiscal year '23, there may not be as many people in line, but I don't know that. Again, when the state has a lot of money available, people can get really creative. And so I expect there will be a lot of applications, but there may not be. So if they have, in the unlikely event that they have fewer requests and they have funding available, there might be an opportunity for a conversation about expanding our scope. But again, based on the feedback that we got from Bruce, who's been to this rodeo a time or two, he thought that this scope would be the most marketable to MMB.
Other questions?
Commissioner. Commissioner White.
All right. So by making this request, we are, even though the public has said, yes, absolutely, we want to have improvement on our existing buildings, and there's great questions about the need and about all of this, we are now making the decision that we're going forward for additional building based on concept drawings from the consultants. And so we're making the decision.
You're not. What you're deciding?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What you're deciding today is whether we should get in line for this funding. If in the intervening months before October 13th, if the board decides, hey, wait a minute, we don't want to do this, we can withdraw our application. But if we don't submit the application by this Friday, then we lose our place in line.
And so, but it's, we have been advised to ask just for the money that we know we absolutely need to fix all the buildings, that the county taxpayers, they fix our buildings. That burden will be borne by the taxpayers, more or less, because we're not going to ask for state bonding to help fix our existing buildings, even though that is, that is an approved or that is a necessity that has to happen, has to happen, I mean, before anything else.
So.
So we, so the recommendation is to not ask for money for the deferred maintenance portion.
Well, that's, so the request that we would be making would include all deferred maintenance for the courthouse and the LEC, which comprises the biggest portion of our deferred maintenance. I mean, those are the highest, some of the highest ticket items on the building list. And it's not accurate to say that everything else would have to be borne by the local levy because there would be an opportunity to come back in two years and put in another capital request.
So it's more important, my understanding was that the consultants, the drawings that they gave to us are conceptual drawings. How they came up with these numbers, I've seen no, where did they get those numbers from? We've been given no data as to how they figured out what the building cost would be. And they haven't done any engineering and they haven't done any, you know, what's the ground like under the LEC? I mean, you might have to blast. It might be, you know, so for them to come up with numbers as to what that would cost without doing all of this additional stuff, it's just a shot in the dark. I mean, it really is.
That's not accurate. That is, so, so they did, and I thought, Commissioner, I had shared with you all, and I think it's in the CIP, the spreadsheet showing the square footage calculations for new space based on certain standards for different levels of position. And so based on our current staff roster, the consultant did make calculations about how much space is needed. I mean, we have, as you're aware, we have people who are doubled and tripled up in offices in this building. We have a human resources director and a human resources generalist who don't have a permanent workspace. We have a public information coordinator who doesn't have a workspace. We have our emergency manager who's currently officing in the auditor's office. There are a number of shortcomings in the space that we currently have. And I appreciate that we need to have more conversation about these issues, but it's not accurate to say that we have not done an assessment of our current space and the space that we need and that we haven't made database decisions or recommendations.
My question is about how do you come up with construction costs without, there's so much that you have to put up. I mean, before you give anyone an estimate about what their house will cost, you can't do a square footage price in this county and say, this is going to be what it is because you don't know what is in the ground, what you have to do. You might have to blast or you might be just fine. You don't know. I mean, there are considerable costs that this county builders have to consider that you might not have in a metropolitan area because of the geography of the place. So I just question where these numbers came from for, if you were to ask for money for the construction on the second floor and an expansion, where did they come up with those numbers?
Madam Chair, if I may, I mean, if we follow your argument, we're going to be asking for more money, not less.
Absolutely. You might need to.
So I don't understand what the problem is for going for this money.
I would like to, well, the primary, I mean, the one thing is we're saying to people, this is all it's going to cost. But still, again, we haven't, so we are, we are saying to the taxpayers, we're going to go after this money. But maybe then, once we have, are in line and we can have it, we'll say, oh, we don't really need it. We'll, you know.
What's the problem?
The problem is the fact that I don't believe that, I'm one that I don't know, I mean, you can do a square footage price and whose, or square footage need for people that are working based on what standards. I mean, what can we really afford? And that's my question, doing additional place. We had the discussion that the size of the offices that the public health and human services staff occupy and that they have to share space. There are different office arrangements where nobody has an office of their own. Nobody has an office of their own. Rena Rogers was, she presented that to us. I think Administrator Yorki knows about that, too. And so we haven't explored any of that, which might be far more cost effective than having to build, having to do new construction.
Yeah. So what's the problem with this request? Because we can pull back, what is the?
Because once, it's human, it seems to be human nature that if you've got free money, we're going to spend it.
I don't believe in human nature. I don't think you want to make assumptions. We need to do things systematically and based on data. And right now, we're on a timeline. And so I think we should take an opportunity and then we can do the assessments that, when we get more specifics. But I think we're in a really good position considering the whole state had one week to put this together and get an application in. And we're kind of primed for that.
Yes.
It's very, very convenient for us. And I think we have a really good shot compared to the rest of the state. So I think to serve the taxpayers the best we can is to be able to go after the state dollars. And then if we decide we don't need the state dollars, okay, well, then that's not a problem.
But we, but we need state dollars for fixing the, our other buildings also. When it says, and I still don't get, I mean, if we're going to need like $300,000 to fix a town hall, we could rebuild town halls for $300,000. What are we going to do to these structures? I haven't seen for all these different things.
That's not what we're talking about right now.
So this seems to me to be the priority, what we're saying, the priority of all our buildings is the courthouse and the law enforcement center. We're not saying we're not going to do something with the other facilities. But this is our priority. And I am very supportive of trying to go after this money. It's a larger sum than typically the state of Minnesota has. And I think, as you said, we're primed. We have information, we have data. We may be a little ahead of other counties in getting this. It's going to help our taxpayers out.
To Commissioner Starlee's point, and we talked a little bit about this in the building committee, I like the idea of including the highway department building in there because I think that's another significant cost. And I think that would also get good support from the state. I understand we can't ask, but I understand it may not be prudent to ask for everything. But I think including that is, would be a good move. And then we can, again, as you say, pull back. And I understand we don't have as much information with that, but looking through the application, it doesn't look like they require that much detail right now for this Friday deadline. And so I'm hopeful we'll be able to get more information if it's required from the state to support that. But I see that as another big cost that I don't want to have on our local levy if we can avoid. It's just, and again, I've expressed this to James, I don't know how to draw that line. Bruce Kimmel would know better how to draw that line, but I have that. I think that the highway department would fall very well into the public safety, just the systems that we need to operate. But I don't, I don't want to ask for too much and then get nothing, but it's, that's the risk.
Well, the idea of having that, basically a paragraph saying there's an opportunity and then speaking with the state to find out.
And I think it's easier to pull back than to be like, oh, there's more, well, we can ask for more. Like, I think that's normally how those, I don't normally see them offering more down the road. It's more of like offering less down the road. So that's where I would start big, come back instead of start small and then, and then can we have this, and then this, and then this, you know, keep adding stuff. It's not the type of amendments I think they would like. They would like the reverse.
And I appreciate your point. My misgiving about that is that we have not generated a cost estimate for any buildings on the highway campus.
Well, not to the degree that we have with CRBPS, but.
Not at all.
My understanding from Robbie was that there are old costs that we could extrapolate. It's not that accurate and it might be shooting low, but it's a lot more than zero.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. I would like clarification as in the resolution number four, whereas the capital improvement plan has also identified the need to reconfigure existing space and add new space to accommodate existing staff who don't currently have permanent workspaces. So does that cover, because when I read this resolution, it's like, yep. So does that cover, because when I read this resolution, it's like, yep, our discussion of which option is the best option, I get, oh, we're going with the justice center. I don't, I haven't made that decision yet. I get, we're going to ask for the most. But I don't know that the justice center is the best solution to our space needs. I haven't been sold on that yet. And I was hoping for more discussion. So I'm concerned that we're asking for a justice center, and we might get funded only for a justice center. And I want clarification. Does that fourth whereas say, no, we've decided we don't need a justice center, we need highway, or we need to build on to this current building to take care of our needs? Can, when you talk about that we can up until October change it, is that where I can feel confident that we can change it?
I'm, my understanding is that that would constitute a significant scope change, and that that's not something that MMB would support. But I, but Commissioner, I'll also caveat that with saying that I have not been through this process before. And so what, what I know about it is what I've gotten from talking with Bruce. You know, I'm, I'm really leaning heavily on him in terms of what I'm putting forward here, because he has a lot more experience with these things. And so I totally get the point that you're making, and I, I'm with you. I would have liked to be further along in our conversations about the additional space. Again, I'm, I'm trying to maximize the likelihood that we can get a place in line, that we can get some funding from the state. You know, if, if we have further conversations this summer and into the fall, and this board decides that, hey, this is not what we want to do, we can withdraw the application. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't, the feedback we got from Bruce was, if we just put forward a request to do nothing but deferred maintenance on our existing buildings, that is not something that would be as compelling to MMB as option one. And so that's, that's why you have the proposal in front of you that you do. Again, there, there, there's a lot of uncertainty here. But one thing that is certain is that we, if we don't submit an application, we won't get our place in line. And we would have to wait probably another couple of years to get state dollars for the CIP. So I'm, I'm just putting forward the, the best recommendation that, that we have at this time.
Brady, I have a question. How, because you have been around for a while, and, and what is your thought on the recommendation of Bruce to go with this particular option, and then indicating there may be an opportunity for looking at highway department?
Yeah, I took, just as has been stated here, that his opinion, it was probably the best, that type of program, is the, probably has the best, better chance of being funded. I don't know the, the answer to, I don't even know the answer to whether they would accept an application just for maintenance, since it's capital. But it is preservation of capital. But from the wording in their application, I can't discern that. And it seemed to me like it read, if, we don't want you to, to add on some big capital to a building, to like a crumbling building, take care of the one you got, and then, you know, make a capital improvement to that. But, but also take care of, but whether, I mean, would they accept an application that was just maintenance? I'm not sure. It didn't read to me that that would be very high priority.
I just wanted to get your perspective on that. I, I feel
It's, we haven't done, I haven't been part of the, county board hasn't, hadn't done a capital request like this. The, I guess the last time it would have been similar would be when this courthouse was.
Ninety-four?
Yeah, I mean, after that, we had the, you know, we had sales tax money for a couple of them, and a baitment, baitment bonding. We just didn't have any particular, we had transportation sales tax when we did that big project, a couple of big projects. This is like the first, other than, you know, nineteen ninety-seven, maybe, or ninety-six, that I've been around, that you had an obvious option, or something like this.
Well, thanks for that. Well, I feel, I want to go for the money. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I mean, that's really helpful for me. The ninety-four is the last time we made a capital request from the state.
No, we didn't. We haven't made one. I said, that seemed like the, the other similar
Oh, we didn't even do it then?
No, and I don't, I don't know if the parameters were different. That's quite a while ago. I didn't get
So we haven't made a capital request from the state, basically.
Maybe that gives us a really good chance of getting the money.
Like Historical Society did, for example.
Yeah.
And there may be some other entity. I'm not aware.
But not the county?
No.
Because as we read through the letter from Jim Showalter, with particular focus on projects that address life and safety issues, preserve existing infrastructure and repair existing facilities before starting new projects, fifty percent local match, community engagement. I, I see our entire capital improvement plan falling within that. I think this is a really historic time as far as an opportunity. I don't think this is something Bruce has encountered before. And, and all of our needs, and we haven't made requests, which is unusual for a county. Most counties make pretty big requests, such as Carlton County Justice Center, seventy-five million dollars. That, our, our cap, our, our requests are small in comparison. And to include that whole thing, to map it out, prioritize it, and then, you know, go down that list, these are our big ones. And then, further conversations with MMB could be like, ah, okay, well, scrap the further ones. But if there's an opportunity like this, I think it's our duty to go after it. And I, I understand the risk of not getting any of it. But from what it sounds like, further conversations can pare it down easier than further conversations can add to it. So, and that, I'm sure makes you very uncomfortable, based on your conversation with Bruce.
Wait a minute, you guys, you guys are the policymakers, so.
Yeah, no, no, but I, I greatly respect your, your opinion and your knowledge and your, your experiences. It's just, again, this is unprecedented. I, but, you know, it's a, I don't, yeah, I don't know. It just seems like if there's an opportunity, you go for it. And then if you gotta come reel back a little bit, okay, but.
And so Commissioner Mills, when you say go for it, are you, what, what is the scope that you're suggesting?
The everything.
So
Twenty-five, thirty?
The whole capital improvement project, the whole CIP plan, because preserve existing infrastructure and repair existing facilities. And we have such a case for all the deferred maintenance that's happened, much of because state pilt has not increased. And so we've been having to, you know, cut our costs, because we haven't been getting revenue from the state. And it's just this whole conglomerate of things that I think may make a strong case. And plus, everybody loves Cook County, you know? That's, and we haven't, we have never made a request. And, and our request is this big compared to like one other county's one project? I, I, I don't know. It's.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Good point.
Because I haven't ever been through this process before either. Is it possible, okay, we submit a request for twenty-five, thirty million dollars, and I get that they're saying they'll match fifty percent. If they get a lot of, will they start cutting, saying, okay, no, you don't get it, you don't get it? Or will they say, well, you know what? We'll only give thirty percent?
Right.
Does that happen at the state?
That's what I was wondering, too. Yeah.
And the grant application down the road? I mean, does, do you, is it like a typical grant where you describe who you are and how special you are, and the needs, and how poor we are, and all those sorts of things? You plead your case, because we are unique and we are, and if you
This, this, this project, this application that's due Friday has a section for project rationale. So it gives you an opportunity to list out all the reasons why you want and need to do this project. So, and I'm working on that.
And it has, it has years down the road for different projects. It's a whole grid. And so that's what gives me thought, like, okay, well, we don't have to do it all now. But if we map it out for them, they might really like that, and to see what our plan is. But
We'll be including the entire draft CIP as an attachment in this preliminary application. So they'll have the full amount of data that we have.
All that data. That's a real selling point.
I'm just worried the resolution states we're doing a justice center. And that, that part is where I have the most reservations.
Mm-hmm.
Because maybe that's the right choice.
I get it.
But I don't know it yet.
I think it's safe to not have that language and say, we're thinking about it, or potential, exploring that option. I mean, in my mind, a huge factor is how much state funding we get. You know, that's, that's a, that's a huge factor for me.
I'm going to come back, though, to the fact that Bruce has looked at this. Bruce has advised us. And he is clearly the most knowledgeable. This is all kind of a first for us. And I'm, I'm going to come back to, I want to make sure we get some money. And I'm feeling really comfortable with the proposal that you put together, just for the certainty of it. I don't want to blow our chances.
Well, don't overstate that. Nothing's certain.
No.
I mean, but again, this, this gets us a place in line.
More likely.
Yeah.
So I don't mean to push too hard on this, but it's just, reading through this letter from, from the commissioner is like, okay, we just got to get our place in line, and then we can modify it through October. So if we just start knocking stuff off of a request, that could look better, too. I just don't think adding things to the request would look, would look good, so.
And I would like to say, I agree with David. Take our chance. I mean, this is what we need. This is capital. This is deferred maintenance. This is what we need. And, and we have, we have data. I mean, if we're, because I don't, I don't, the justice center part of the whole thing, I'm not sold on any of that. But to, if we can go get a place in line, and then we'll have the discussion, and then maybe we'll have some, we'll have more information to decide what we're going to do going forward. And should we, that's in October. Hopefully by October, we will have made a decision on what to do with the capital improvement plan. But we shouldn't sell ourselves short, just, and, and as David, Brady said, we've not asked in how many years?
Ever.
Ever.
So, like, ever, and I do know, well, this was at the state level, and it was for education stuff. But they, they, they looked at applicants, you know, if there was a, they would either not give the full amount, one, one criteria, or if somebody's been getting grants a lot, or asking a lot, or not asking a lot. Those people that were asking kind of were read more favorably, because they were trying to be fair. So I would like to think that, I mean, I want, I want, I want all of our buildings fixed everywhere. I don't know, so still need to see what we're going to do with them. But it's five years, and it's, and if we can get state funding for it, and not put the burden directly on to our levy, our taxpayers, I'm for that. But I'm not in favor of just asking for money for new construction that I don't agree with at this moment. So go for all of it. If we decide we don't need some of it, then we'll say, thank you. But no, but, you know.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I respect Bruce a hundred percent as well. I just, again, think he's a, he's trying to minimize the uncertainty, right? He's trying to give us our most certain path forward, and probably more certain yet, and be just asking for one thing, you know? And he's like, well, you can do two. And I just think because it's unprecedented, this is where we do it. And we haven't done it before. And it's, it's, the, the fact, so I don't know if you've had a chance to talk with Mary Ann, James? Mary Ann Conboy?
I have not, no.
Yeah, that would also give us some good insight, I guess. But, boy, we're going sideways here.
No, it's, it's a good discussion, and I totally get where, where you are coming from. I would love to pay for fifty percent of the entire CIP with state dollars. I would love that. That would be the best outcome for Cook County taxpayers. No question about it. Again, based on, you know, I'm, again, I'm leaning on Bruce, because I have not been through this process before. I listen to people who are smarter than I am. And Bruce, this is what Bruce suggested. I am not, I'm not averse to, I mean, if you want to amend the resolution to say, the capital improvement plan with option A and deferred maintenance on all buildings, that would be your choice. I don't know, I don't know a lot. I don't know a lot about how things would play out from that point. I certainly understand the impulse to try to use as much state funding for the implementation of this plan as possible. I think that's exactly the right thing to, to go for. Again, I'm just, I'm looking at it from the perspective of, you know, how can we maximize our chances of getting at least some substantial portion of the cost of the CIP covered by, by the state. And so that's why we have this resolution.
Commissioner Hawkins?
This is a hard one. But I, what I'm
But it isn't. It is, but it isn't. Just in terms of, like, the decision today does not, I mean, you can come back before October thirteenth and say, whoops, this is not what we want to do.
But then we're out eight million dollars.
Well, yeah.
And that's, that's what I'm, delete. So that's why I feel like, well, if we don't do this, we lose our chance. So I guess I'm kind of like Commissioner Mills. I'm leaning toward bigger. Ask for more, and let's pull back over the next few months when we need to.
And just play, I mean, in the narrative, it's like recognizing the intelligence and of the people that are giving the money. Oh, I don't know.
Commissioner Mills?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to offer, Brady and I do have a call scheduled with Bruce this afternoon to follow up on the FMP.
Should we just wait until then?
Yeah, let's just recess and then come back at four o'clock.
Well, we have a meeting at five.
We have a meeting at five.
So I'm just trying to, and again, this application is due Friday, and folks
Yeah.
This is Tuesday.
If, if we substantially change the scope here, I'm going to be staying up all night for the next four nights in a row, which is fine. I can do that. But I, again, I get the, the points that have been made here, I think are on target. Would be great to pay for the whole CIP, or fifty percent of the CIP with state dollars. I'm wondering if there's a way to propose an amendment to the resolution that is contingent, I mean, what I'd like to do is get some additional feedback from Bruce, saying, here's where the board is. They really want our application to be option A and all deferred maintenance. What do you think about that? What I was hearing the last time is, he didn't really love that idea. But I, again, I think your impulse is right. I think it's good. But I would also, I would want to make sure if Bruce, you know, if we talk with Bruce this afternoon, and he says that is just not a good idea, I'd want to have the ability to, to say, okay, we're going to go for the higher percentage of success, rather than throwing in the kitchen sink and hoping it's good. And also And also, I mean, I've been, I've already put a lot of time into this application and Friday's coming very quickly. So just want to make sure that we have a solid application and that it doesn't look like it was just, you know, put together on the fly.
I, I believe with that capital improvement plan that we have, so the draft capital improvement plan, that that's a pretty solid, nothing willy-nilly here. But I feel like by us asking for the whole thing, it's just putting the chips on the table. It's not demanding, it's just saying, these are our needs and can you help us or no? And can you help us somewhat or, you know, I don't know that it's just going to be like a, a binary, you know, a black and white, yes, no. It's, I'm hoping there's going to be that. And that's what that letter is, is kind of alluding to, I think. It's really interesting too. There's some reminders here and it's talking about because they didn't have the 22 projects, right? And so one of the bullets says, adding 17% to those projects just brings it up to 23. It's like, well, that's pretty willy-nilly and that's where I'm like, highway department, we've got some numbers that we can add 17% every year? No. It's, it just feels like, and so I think reaching out to Mary Ann Conboy might be a really powerful insight to maybe before Bruce. I don't know.
So here's a question I have for Attorney Hickin. Can we approve option A with all deferred maintenance in the event that it's acceptable by Bruce Kimmel? And if not, we approve the resolution as written?
I don't think that would be the best way to do it.
Okay.
Having heard your conversation, I think you could do something like add a fourth, or I don't have the resolution in front of me. My computer is dead, I'm sorry. But add an additional directive to the resolution that, that directs the county administrator to decline from submitting an application under these circumstances, whatever it is. If Bruce Kimmel doesn't approve it or, you know, whatever.
Do not submit it or to change the scope.
Yeah, okay. That's the question, whether you can change the scope. So I would say the commissioners can add a line that says the county administrator has discretion to change the scope in the following way, like you can say 10% either direction or limiting it by up to 20% of the emergency prices. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm, I'm just.
Thank you.
Oh, my brother. I'll just stop then.
No, just if Bruce says, you know, if Bruce says, I understand what the board is saying, but I really think our chances are going to be much better if we keep it to option A. As much as I, I agree with the idea of going big because it is a unique opportunity, I also would want to be able to, to rely on Bruce's judgment to determine the scope of the final submission. And if he says, you know, sorry, but this is just a horrible idea, I think you should keep it to, to option A, that would be compelling to me. And so, you know, I don't know. I, I feel very conflicted about this, as, as I think you all do, so.
Well, if it's only asking, I mean, if you, if the request is for only option A, which, only option A, and it were to be granted, that would then mean that that money could only spent on option A, whether or not.
We go that route.
We go that route. So then you got like, great, we have this money, but we not going to spend it. So if, if that's the, I, I can't in good conscience ask for funding for an option that, that we have not thoroughly discussed, thoroughly discussed about the need for, the need, the real need for this and what the ongoing costs for maintenance, yes.
So I'm just looking, Madam Chair, I'm just looking at the resolution now that I have a chance to and is the, I mean, we only refer to the improvements to the, to the sheriff's office in one of these paragraphs or to the law enforcement center in a couple of these paragraphs. Can't we just make that language more general? And they're recital paragraphs anyway, they're not part of your actual resolution action.
So just to say county buildings?
Just to implement the capital improvement plan, which includes a variety of options, but.
Okay.
That's what I like.
Oh, sounds much better.
I mean, the, I'm not sure where the, if this was based on a template, this resolution or not, but I don't know that it's necessary to go into more detail about exactly which building where is going to be. What if you just outlined the, the cost and, you know, described it generally as capital improvement plan for county buildings?
Well, that's fine for the resolution, but the application MMB requires a lot of detail, so.
Right. Sure.
Yes, Commissioner Mills?
And I'm scattered and shooting at all, at all points here, but further on in this, this letter from Commissioner Jim Showalter is, "MMB encourages local governments to be selective in their requests and propose only the most important projects with clear regional or statewide significance." So that curbs my enthusiasm a little bit. That, that clearly states maybe not a blanket for capital improvement and we have to be more discerning, but I still think those bigger ones should be included, like the highway department, but.
Community center?
Yeah, depending on costs. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well.
Because that's towards kids and that's one of the, one of the things too.
I think that's kind of where Bruce was coming from, that, you know, the, the option one relates to the courthouse and the law enforcement center and, and the court system generally. And there's no question, the state, the state has a, a big interest in that. And I think that's why he was saying, you know, this, the scope described in option one would be really compelling to MMB. I think that's why he was making that recommendation.
Slam dunk.
So, you know, and I, again, when you talk about, and like using the town halls as an example, they are not a big piece of the, of the CIP from a cost standpoint. They're relatively small. But I'm concerned that their inclusion, like if we say, you know, we want to fully implement or fully catch up on all deferred maintenance, that starts to weaken the application.
I see, yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I'll agree with that.
Yeah, me too. But, you know, where do we draw that line? Bruce is saying those two.
But if.
Well, do we want to do those two and, and add a highway? I guess that's kind of been our discussion and our priority.
What, what are our top five? For the sake of discussion.
Are you talking about like deferred maintenance? Deferred maintenance needs or?
Costs is what I'm thinking. But yes, yes.
I can tell you, hang on just a second.
We got our top two and we're all, I think we're all kind of thinking highway and then.
Courthouse, law enforcement center.
Community center.
Is that the next?
I don't know.
Oh.
I have, I don't have that. No, it wasn't. Here we go.
So in terms of cost, deferred maintenance needs are greatest at the courthouse, which has again $3.87 million roughly. YMCA over five years has 2.995 million in needs. Law enforcement center is third with 1.7 million in needs. And then those are like the big three. Community center, interestingly, only has a little under $800,000 of deferred maintenance. But I would argue that in the next iteration of the CIP, that's a building that really needs to be a focus because it's so heavily used and it's really, it's not in great shape. So, you know, this, this is not.
I could just have four. And if it could be a highway.
Right, right. And, yeah, and I guess the, the other, so the highway buildings, I mean, those are listed as discrete buildings even though they're a single campus. And so if, if you add those together, let's see, where is the, oops. Global building has about 180,000. How do we call it? Storage, that's already being addressed. The main high, okay, I'm sorry, the main highway department building has about $885,000 of deferred maintenance needs. So it's, it's certainly up there.
Madam Chair, if I may, that's, I like, I like those five. Those are big and, and they're discreet. Looking at these bullets, aid in making Minnesota the best state in the country for kids to grow up. And, and with the community center, I think, and the Y, those are two huge, I mean, 2.95 is huge dollars and that's just deferred. Well, yeah, relative to the whole thing, maybe, maybe not huge, but significant. But those deferred, what does that add up to? Like less than, less than 10 versus the, the new builds or the expansions? And, yeah, I hear, I hear what Bruce is saying, but we're small potatoes. Our requests are small compared to what other, other counties are going to be asking for. So it might be just like a no-brainer for the state, but I like the idea that there can be this kind of two-way communication up until October 13th that we can, we can reel back a little bit. The reason I like, sorry, the reason I like the option A is because that's our largest cost, you know? So I'm trying to maximize, not that that's the way we should go and so I don't want to commit.
But if we don't go that way, we don't.
I don't want to commit to that, but I like asking for that potential cost and then we have our bases covered. But I, again, I understand the hesitancy and committing to going that route is.
So option A, you're saying, and then the deferred maintenance on our?
I don't want to, myself, I don't want to call it option A. I, I, you know, because that defines, that defines it. I just, we have those costs, those, that cost estimate. And so if we just say that's what we're looking at, some kind of.
In the project.
Because we're going to do LEC regardless.
So I've been working on the narrative and I have spent a lot of time kind of describing option one because again, that's the counsel we got from Bruce.
Right.
I'm going to have to do, I would have to do substantial rewriting of the application. The deadline is, is looming. I, you know, I don't, I don't want you to feel like your arms are being twisted. That's, that's not my intent here. Again, I'm just.
It's an overused thing.
Using, using the best information I have to, to, to make this recommendation. And yes, there are, I would, again, I would love to fund the full plan with 50% state dollars. That, that would be optimal. I just think there's a really good chance here that if we throw too much into it, we shoot ourselves in the foot.
Commissioner Hawkins? So I understand that you've done a lot of work. I appreciate that. But I, reading this again, I'm wondering if it's possible where the one whereas we take out, convert the law enforcement to a justice center is add on or remodel the law enforcement to provide office space addition. Because even if we decide not to go with a total big second floor building over at the LEC, we're going to have to do something here. Can, can we not define where that office space is going to be expanded at? It might be option two where we provide some of that space. I'm just trying to get away from that term.
And I get, I get where you're going with that. I think even if we don't have that specific language in the resolution, it still needs to be in the project narrative that we submit by Friday. So, I mean, you know, if, if the, if the project narrative is too vague, this application goes nowhere. It has to be concrete. It has to be data-based. It has to draw from the information that is part of the CIP. And so specificity is important. So regardless of what the language in the resolution is, that information's got to be in the application. I don't see a way to, I mean, if it's, if it's just like really mushy, MMB isn't going to buy it.
Yes, feels like the options are the, to pick option one, two, three, or?
And again, again, this is to get our place in line. If, if you guys make a decision today on which one you want to include as the proposal and then in the intervening months, you guys decide, no, this is not what we want, we can withdraw the application.
We can modify it. I mean, without changing the scope?
We can edit.
Edit.
Edit, not change the scope.
Right, right.
You might still get the maintenance and throw out the cap. You get something.
The editing will be more along the lines of MMB thinks we missed some important information that we then add on. But, but that, that important information can't be, oh, we're building a totally different building. You know, it's, it's got to be, here's, here's the, if it's option one or whatever it is, adding information to make, to make the application more complete. Those are the kinds of edits I think MMB is expecting, but.
Not a complete reduction either.
Right.
I just keep coming back to, to what information Bruce has given us and I feel more confident with the resolution as written, knowing that in two years, we will be going back to the table. That's my thought, looking at it in steps rather than one big chunk.
And I don't, you know, I wonder, I mean, I've thought about that too, if, if in two years, we put in an application to do more of this deferred maintenance stuff and not create new space. I don't know if that would be a really compelling submission. I don't know. Maybe it would, but that's not what Bruce was suggesting.
Commissioner Sterling, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, and it's not as specific. If you need that specificity, you have to pick one, two, or three in order even to do the deferred maintenance. It depends on what, if you pick one, two, or three. Or maybe you don't do any. If you just do maintenance, that's, that's another option.
I don't think there is.
But like you say, it's probably not, yeah.
This doesn't, to me, this isn't maintenance. This is dollars to do some renovations and updating and bringing things up to code and by adding other things. We can do that later. We have till October. They're asking for specific things right now. And I think with James and Brady and, you know, all the consultants we can put together, I have trust that this will be presented properly. I don't know, James, if you want to summarize and send it out to us by the end of the week. You know, I'm not asking that you do that.
But we have to, we have to vote on it.
We have to see that.
We have to.
So, so it's as the resolution for option A without inclusion of the other five major county buildings for upgrading, we're not going to.
As of, as of what we have right now.
So it's only option A.
I'm, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mills.
I, deep in thought, of course. So I missed, I missed, I guess maybe an important part about what you said about the specificity.
Inspecificity.
Of, thank you. Of the, of those. So in our minds, right, these are very, A, B, and C are very different projects, right? From the state, they're very similar, I betcha. We need some more space. These aren't new buildings. We're not taking a green piece of land and digging it up and putting in, you know, foundation and all that. We're just, we're adding onto our existing facility. We're just, we're adding onto our existing facility. So I don't see these as new, it is new space for us, but I don't know that the state's going to see it as new construction. It's, as Commissioner Starley said, renovation and improvements and updates. And if, I think as specific as we, well, there's me just arguing and, and what do I know? But I would, I would, I would think that we would only need to be as specific as saying, we need, we need these updates, we need these spaces, these, these departments need these spaces and including it there and including the potential cost of those versus saying specifically, this is what we're doing. It's just, we're being specific about what our needs are, we just don't know yet how we're going to address that and a big factor is state funding. But maybe that's, yeah, in the application, maybe it says something differently about specificity.
And I see what you're saying, Commissioner Mills. I'm coming back to Bruce's comments about needing that specificity, that that is what in fact helps the state.
Well, we are being specific with what, with what space needs we have, we just are not being specific about how we're going to address that because a big factor is state We can be very specific about our needs, we just are not yet ready to be specific about our solution. And, and I think identifying the needs is really what, what the state needs to hear, but maybe they do need the specific solution.
Commissioner, I think having a conversation this afternoon with Mary, was that her name? That would help to clarify if you could, I mean, really clarify what they're looking for, needing, what they are needing. And if this would be coming forward in another couple of months, we would have had the full discussion about the, excuse me, the capital investment improvement plan and, and everything and we would be going from what that decision was made. But right now, it's the cart before the horse kind. I mean, I still-
The cart next to the horse.
No, at this point, it looks like the horse is way back there and that cart's really moving down the road if we're asking for money only for that. And if you don't-
I see.
So.
Madam Chair, I, I know we were kidding about the recess, but-
No, I'm not kidding.
Okay, yeah.
I was not.
Okay, well, I was. And now I'm not. And I, I think we're full within our legal rights to do that if it's helpful with this. We haven't done that, or I've never done that, kind of recess.
But we could recess until four o'clock when we have further information and that would give us one hour to determine our direction. It would give an opportunity for a couple of phone calls to occur.
The meeting was at four with Bruce, though, is that right?
Three.
Three? Oh, we got all the time in the world.
Yeah, you can adjourn as long as you state that-
We're not adjourning, we're just recessing.
We're recessing.
You can recess as long as you state the date, time, and location of picking up the meeting again.
Madam Chair, James, how did?
He's checking his schedule.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, yeah, I was going to say, again, the comfort with the uncertainty, you know, we're, we're certainly prolonging that, but yes.
You are, and I mean, I was going to, as soon as this meeting ends, I was going to continue working on the application. Time is running really short. And, you know, I've got, and I've got meetings tomorrow and Thursday and I'm just, I'm, I'm worried that there won't be sufficient time to put in a solid application. I, I can't stay up all night.
No.
I used to be able to do that, but I can't, I'm old.
No, I would not ask that.
Perhaps this should take precedence for the meetings that we would otherwise be expected to be at. You send your apologies and say, I have pressing county business and, you know, unless you're leading the meetings.
Even then, I would just, and this is your, you're the pro. I just don't know enough at this point. But that, this seems like a, a big dollar.
Kind of a priority.
But, yeah.
Most important thing we've gotten.
But I don't know what your other, there are other important meetings too, so that's why I'm-
Madam Chair, so this is one option, recess till four. Well, what's the other option? We're getting then pretty close to Friday. Do we can come back on Friday?
We can't because we-
So what's our options?
Our option is to either make a decision now or to recess and make a decision at four o'clock with additional information.
I, I'm just wondering, is anybody against asking for money?
I am. If it is only for the construction of, of, for the law enforcement, for moving all of legal over to a justice-
For a justice center.
I am opposed to just that because I do not believe that, I mean, I have not been total, I mean, yeah, really nice. I mean, Aiken had a really nice justice center and all this sort of stuff, but we are not a larger, I mean, not that size of a county. Once the facility is put together and paid for, what are the additional costs? I don't know if anyone's done all of that. I mean, there's, you know, going forward, what's it going to cost to maintain that type of, of thing? And then, and so I'm not convinced and I will vote against just going for Plan A because if we got the money, which we probably would, because, oh, that sounds really good, but then at some, we decide in the interim that that's really not the best use, the best direction to go, then we just say, sorry, we were just kidding, we've changed our mind.
I don't see the word justice. It says-
Plan A, option A. What is option A in, on our CIP plan?
And, and again, the, the resolution is one thing, the application has to be detailed. So, you know, we can't just fudge on it. It's got to be a discreet, well-defined plan.
So I believe that having a conversation with the funders and say, this is our, you know, we have, we haven't asked, and remind them that we haven't asked as a county for anything from the state. And we're little and we don't have any taxpayers and we have all this county-owned, state-owned property. We, we're very, we are unique in that situation, so our dollars are really hard-fought and it's hard on our taxpayers. So, and that would be the conversation.
I, I just want to clarify one point. Option A does include all deferred maintenance for both the LEC and the courthouse, so it's not just constructing new space. It's also offsetting significant deferred maintenance needs.
Commissioner Mills?
That's helpful, thank you. And, you know, again, I, for us, these seem like discrete projects, right? But we, I think we all recognize, work needs to be done in the courthouse, work needs to be done at the, the LEC. And then it's the scope of work. And so in option A, there's, there's more emphasis on, more space at the law enforcement center, but even if we did a different option, there would be more space at a different, so it's, it's all one project in my mind because it's so connected. If we're not doing it here, then we're doing it there. If we're not doing it there, then we're doing, you know. And so that's why I think if we really focus on our space needs and not necessarily what the, what, which option, I, I feel like that's, that's pretty specific. There are a, a number of specific space needs we can say with the court, specifics space needs we can say with law enforcement, specifics space needs we can say in the courthouse without saying how we're going to address that exactly. Does that make sense or is that not specific enough?
I hear what you say, but I don't think that's a good application. I really don't.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution of support for a capital request in the amount of 8.7 million to Minnesota Management and Budget to help implement our county's capital improvement plan. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Um, I thought we were maybe going to recess instead of making a decision now because there's the conversation with both Mary Ann and Bruce that I think are, could be very significant.
Madam Chair, but I think that James and Brady needs to know how we consider this as important vote. If it's voted down, we're done.
Right.
Wait, no.
If, if we don't support it.
I, I just don't necessarily support that small of a request.
So you don't know? What, what, how much are you supporting then?
After a conversation with Mary Ann and a further one with Bruce, I would know more about what I would support.
So we have a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? We can deal with this, then we can move on. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. All right. So, do we want to have a motion to recess until four o'clock PM here in the commissioner's room?
I make a motion to recess until four PM in the commissioner's room.
And is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Further discussion?
I, I really apologize if, if, I don't want to put more burden on staff and I don't want, you know, I, I want to get as much going as we can to leverage as much as we can and, and I, yeah, I truly do not want to, to burden staff more. It's just, I feel like we can, we can hopefully leverage more, but maybe not. Maybe come, come four o'clock, I'll change my tune.
Madam Chair, how, what's your price? I mean, what do you want to leverage it more for?
I do not have a dollar amount. I see our needs at the courthouse, the Y, the LEC, the community center, and the highway. And I see that we do not yet have consensus on how we should address those needs. And so I feel like if we have more information from Mary Ann and Bruce about some of these strategy things, about the historic nature of this funding and the fact that we have not made a request before and just that our request is pittance compared to a lot of other counties, that it could, it could, it could change the conversation or, or Bruce's conception because he's not just helping us, he's helping many different clients and, and therefore has much more experience, but just that scope surprises me that he would, he would think that's asking, asking more. So, so, and it may, it may be too weak of an application, but I, I would like to have more information from both Mary Ann and Bruce about that.
So are we asking James then to add YMC and the community center and the highway?
Right.
Ask him to ask about that, to get feedback on that.
How do you feel about that, James?
I'm, I feel a little adrift right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I will do whatever the board wants to do, of course, and that's, that is my job. I'm feeling really uncomfortable with the significant, potentially significant change in scope and trying to get all of that into an application and getting that submitted by Friday. I'm really worried about that.
So maybe the conversation then would throw it out that we're looking at these five things? What do you think about that? Or resolution only says two. So where do we go from here?
I, I mean, I guess the, the other thing is now that this proposed, this resolution has been voted down, we can't come back to it and the board can't vote on that again because the decision's been made. So that scope of work is out the window.
Yes. I was fairly uncomfortable with that.
And I was looking at that we had pretty good consensus on the highway, looking that, at, at that as the addition.
We, we don't have good cost numbers for, I mean, aside from deferred maintenance, we do not have costs for additions at the highway. That was never contemplated as part of the CIP.
Madam Chair, Attorney Hickon, what is the, how significantly do we need to change the resolution for it to be legal for us to take up again? Or not again, how different?
What do we need to change if we want to bring that back at four o'clock?
You don't need to change anything.
Oh, we don't?
I, I'm not sure if I understand that.
So we can say with additional information, we can vote on it again.
Yeah. Are, is your concern that the public doesn't have adequate notice of what you'll be talking about this afternoon or that you feel like you have to have an exact version of the resolution that you're considering?
The question is, once a vote, once a resolution has been voted on, can the board come back later in the day and vote on the same resolution again? My understanding is by stat-
We have to change a little something.
No, they can't.
Right, in the resolution.
Right.
That's right. It has to have-
So it has to be different to some market degree. I don't know. What is the criterion we use to say this is a different resolution?
Yeah, that's something I can research.
Thank you. And sorry to have to put that on you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As an example, maybe we could just remove the fifth paragraph in the resolution and that would be substantial, I would say, for a change. And come four o'clock if that's, you know, if-
Yeah.
Something like that. I'm just looking, just want to be legit, want to keep our options open and also don't want to stress James out too much.
Right, too late.
No.
So we have a motion and a second to take a recess until four o'clock. Any further discussion?
Best day ever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are recessed until four o'clock in the commissioner's room.